Anyone want to see our attendee?
Okay, welcome to the planning board meeting for May fifteenth, twenty twenty four. I'll begin with the roll call Alden Clark here. Beth Flyer is not here. Bob Coke.
Here.
Jamie Pennington's here. Ed Rogers is not here. Charlie Pomassato, maybe coming today, he's not here yet. Jeff Bluestein.
Here.
Anne Bogdan.
Here.
And Rick Taylor here. So we have four members and two associates here. And everybody's in the room, so we don't have any roll call votes tonight. And we'll begin with the first item on the agenda, which is approval of our plan. Two hundred and three High Street. Anybody here to make that presentation? You would have all, all applicants would be in the room.
Actually, Adam, Adam, here.
Yeah, just, there we go. Can you guys, can you hear me?
Yes. You're the heroes.
I can hear you guys.
Speak to the plan.
Sure. So we've got the, we've got two oh three high and fourteen Dexter Lane. Parcels of which are going to be combined parcel. A that you see is the rear of two oh three high. It is now being absorbed to the lot lines of fourteen Dexter. And will bear frontage along fourteen Dexter. And that's, it's kind of been in the planning department. I think Jennifer has seen it and reviewed it and we made a few adjustments to the previous Mylar and brought a new Mylar in that had zoning matrix, zoning matrix for both R two and HSRB. And at that point, that was the only question or concern or change.
Yeah, there's, there were questions about developments that might happen on this land. No one's playing with numbers, they gave the process reduced and simplified to just a question. Taking place in the land, this case the lots that are being created here, configuration are very, um, the patient that you are. Um, so, um, this, to be simple and, um, okay.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, yeah, question is Andy, how does this work as far as the assessors map and so forth? So the lot previously was thirty, thirty seven dash eleven. And it's thirty seven, um, dash. Uh, but just does, so does the, do they still keep those two names and they're just in configuration?
The lot numbers, the lot two effectively. Lot number, but lot map number will be assigned. Lot one. Well, uh, of the three HP.
That was, that was my question.
Yeah.
On the, on, on this plan, it refers to the front setback for fourteen Dexter now. It's, I think it's like two hundred and seventeen feet. It's a front setback on the little notes on the side. What does that refer to?
You're part of the. But Adam, did you want to?
Unless it changed something. Front setback hundred and sixty seven feet on the lot two. What does that refer to?
Sorry, you guys were breaking up a little bit there.
Oh, there's.
Yeah, front sentence, then the new, the number of the proposed is a hundred and sixty seven feet.
Uh.
Doesn't seem to make sense. A lot to, for a lot to. There is an existing house there, which is, um, what the feet, feet on the road. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if I can effectively answer that one. Let me see again what, uh, because we're talking about the zoning table for lot two. Uh, and the proposed setback being one sixty seven.
I think that is my, you're showing the required setback as being thirty, I think. Seen a plan somewhere that shows a house. I think that's proposed, that's what they're proposing, the house. Setback under sixty seven feet.
Problem here is because that's it's information that the zoning administrator is aware of because of the discussion of the structures, but we're seeing that identification that's.
So all of the proposed calls are really done.
In essence, the zoning administration, it's actually other. Table shows some information that is beyond what we need. Look at, I guess here.
So will this table, will this plan with the, with the proposed information be reported such?
It doesn't even start.
I just was wondering whether that somehow, some way limits the applicant as to what they can do. They ended up wanting to do a hundred and sixty foot setback instead of seventy.
Uh, no, no, in essence, this is only certain. But yeah, again, we would, I, my, my guess is any type of issue like that arise, be discreet question, issue, it would necessarily be impacted by this.
I mean, it's a good, it's a good point. It's confusing. Something on an A and R plan that doesn't really belong there. It doesn't hurt it.
Well, and I think, again, keep in mind the zoning administrative perspective, we're there's two different zoning districts trying to consider. Lots of making it, I think, why I think the intent is. Make sure with this plan that everything makes sense, singular sense of plans in terms of pretty, pretty all that. So since the fact question that go to, you know, structure is already identified. So it's, you know, I think it's because the, I think it's, it's me, Adam and Jennifer, they go back. Details to, to ensure that this plan. Uh, at the outset. Yes, seeing here, even though you're not seeing the envelope, but looking up.
Any other questions?
Is there, is there any wetlands in the back?
There, on the lot two, yeah. I think it's actually the one. It does extend above that part.
Um, if there are, this is not a public hearing. Okay, so, um, primary motion. Motion will be to resource the approval upper part.
I'll move to endorse the A and R.
Okay. Second go, okay. All in favor? Hi, the opposed? Thank you. We would like, we have.
Thanks, Peter.
Be in the room.
Yeah, I, I don't know anything. All whatever.
Okay, the next, um, application is the application by Edward J. Reynolds Church for special permit amendment thirteen R Bronfield Street. And because this is a special permit, I'm going to designate with Brian and Jennifer. The voting members. And who is appearing on behalf of us?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. If that's there, you don't have to use that mic at all. As long as everybody speaks loudly, we're actually using this mic.
It's on today. Uh, Mr. Chair, my name is Ben Roberts. I'm from Utah, the cops. With me is Matt Lang. It's Alvin Stoppard, architects. Sixty permanent. So for this property, there's sixty permit from November two thousand and five, all ended in August of two thousand and nine. And the condition of the original permit being changed to the different structures, arts permission. So the proposal is to remove the last year. Sure. Very addition. This is consistent with addition number five. Also needs our parts. Also, I approach on it as a change in. Or change in, create a. Good evening, everyone. Matt Lang and Stoppard Architects will be eight markets street for the record. As I mentioned, this project is part of a sixty application many, many years ago. Hopefully, the written. So then quite some time since the project has, has been before the board. Uh, from a site plan perspective, what we're looking to do is expand this green porch northeast by eleven feet. And then five and a half feet in sort of like the north, northwest direction. We're showing the zoning matrix for both the, the single and mountain family, which for purposes of tonight are addressing the single family dimension of permits. Um, so we're, we're slightly increasing the lot coverage by one point five percent, but all of the other dimensional requirements we comply with. From a square footage standpoint, the existing gray sort of dark box there that I has called out, the existing square footage is a hundred and nineteen square feet. We're proposing three hundred and sixty seven square feet. So it's about a net increase of two hundred and forty eight square feet. Uh, also, this plan is the proposed deck on the top right. It sort of fills in the gap between the proposed addition and the existing house. It's about eighteen by sixteen and about two hundred and eighty six square feet, approximately twenty two inches from, from the grid. Slides. So there's no observable changes from the front elevation. The entire addition is actually hidden from view. There's an existing single story pantry addition that's upside. The addition of. So this, the left elevation, it shows that the majority of the changes are shown. Uh, the red line that the EXE exists versus proposed on the lower proposed elevation drawing. We're copying and matching a lot of the detail that on the house, trim, the character of the house, the all size of window and door panels, scale and proportion, uh, they're all based on. Um, but because we're increasing the footprint, bringing a pitch roof on this would have been really tough. What we're doing, what we're proposing to do is keep the mass low and do a flat roof. Um, and still add some, you know, some architectural detail. It's actually, Andy, if you don't mind, zoom into the lower screen. Stair. Using like a, a trim detail and a metal skirt that will wrap the, the entire addition. And again, it's all sort of similar profiles that are taken off the house or, or of, of light and time with the, uh, the existing aesthetic and style. The existing. This also sort of keeps it within a couple of inches. So the, the existing height is twelve foot eight, the proposed height is twelve foot eight, so it ends up being the exact same thing. The height is taken from different. So a pitch roof is different from midpoint, so it's perceived a little differently, but again, I think keeping the mask down helps blend this a little bit better and sort of takes on some of the character that's shown on the second. Uh, next slide. Uh, so this, uh, is the, the rear elevation and minor changes can be shown here. There's, uh, the pitch rule, you know, sort of a better view here, removing that, that upper drawings in existing. Uh, we're going with flat as I mentioned, and, um, this is also a better view of that proposed deck. So on the south are sort of inside of the, of the house, but if you can zoom into the bottom part, the existing, uh, the proposed decks are twenty two inches from the ground, so it's pretty low. Wrapping the stairs around it, so it, it engages where the addition is and should do. Next. So this is the left elevation and I think it better shows the scale of the addition with the existing house. Um, it, it's relatively small, the width is, you know, of, of all the second floor is from it. But, um, it, it, again, it's just a better sort of location or a view, sorry. How we're keeping it on, yeah. Uh, not that we're up against any height restrictions, but it sort of didn't make a lot of sense to add any unnecessary height if we didn't need to. And I think it's just, that's what I'm matching of an architecture. Um, so that really concludes the architecture. For doubt or answer any questions, but we believe that the modification to the drawings are that we're proposing are in kind and that's similar style to what was previously approved. Most likely for modification to the, uh, previously approved plan. And turn back over to those of the presentation that we have to continue. Thank you for that. So again, nothing in the proposal attacks the conditions. All the permit decisions have been filed. Restricted component. And as required by the. Mr. Ray, on the front of the trees, so you have these slides. Yeah, two, two percent trees that. Next, I guess. So in addition to satisfying the conditions of the permits. Of the C permits. General requirements from second generation. I don't know if I should give to each of them, but that's the only thing we use. A lot of the, in the scheme of the document. Just two requirements. Will not affect traffic, construction or utilities. No special regulations related to this district. Lot change or impact in the mission of the neighborhood. Again, this is a kind of use. Department. And partly this project would not be any dangerous, noxious or. So in summary, the proposal satisfies the. See permits as well as a contingency of the awareness. So the applicant must. Not vision. And finally, we received seven letters of support. The project. From five and seven Bronfield Street, fifteen Bronfield Street, seventeen Bronfield, eighteen Bronfield, twenty one Bronfield, twenty two Bronfield. Thirteen Bronfield. The damage structure of the lot. So that, uh, the case that we're.
Thank you. Any questions for the other?
Uh, just procedurally, so, um, in this modification of special permit, do you have to go advertise a butters and a butters too and do all that? Or is this just, so that's already?
Sure. This is a routine question, actually, so. But frequently both zoning board appeals and the planning board. Uh, in essence, let us blow down a quick. When a modification like this comes up, uh, in essence, what's happened here is what is major, if it's steam ladder nature, since, since, nothing that would have subtly impacted the board's decision in the first place, you know, as the proof of permit. Uh, or isn't any sort of meaningful change that, you know, warrants none of that. Um, if it's a minor tweak, if you will, to something that doesn't warrant all that process, providing it all, where at the time the cost may expensive to do with all that. Um, because it's not procedural to the three sector. Generally speaking, um, it is difficult for some of the bullet point language and the conditions of decisions is just that where it approves a minor modification, it's not advertised to the butters as something that is for being that. However, um, if the, and this is part of our review. Simply that, yeah, in, in, we have, uh, these products cross. Um, when we see something coming in, it's dripping, it's whatsoever, see something forward, the board, the. Minor, we can all go smoothly and simply, uh, however, if it's something major, this is what it happens, no, no, we usually notice. Um, and we just basically advertise and then the applicant comes and presents it and bump orders are notified and the arbitrary, I don't know, but if that might be. Uh, in this case, the office didn't have any reason to deflect us, then we didn't get those minor agreements, we were agreed with things that are minor, was that you?
So then procedurally, we would determine it was a line of modification, because that had already been done for the board.
Been done internally.
Okay, so we have.
Yes, just to be clear, the board is also making its own determination as a perfect thing already here. So we've just determined that it's reasonable to come to the board, modification that is already for that. Because we would want to waste your time with this. Um, so we've basically, we start preemptively determine that we think it's reasonable that we recognize the board's laws and final determination, because you're most ready to party, so. Again, we have to, actually, we were, pretty as like, being like using that.
Well, the, just following up on that. Sometimes we're given the draft position assistance to determine something of a major or a minor, and that's not coming to us. Seems like it is, it's already been determined to be a major. Because reminder, we. Uh, we have to counter. Here we have.
Yeah, this, we have to treat it as something without the butters, should be noticed. Speaking of the motions that began.
In this case, we're, we, there hasn't been a term, we don't have to determine this major or minor, because you've already said, this is correct, sorry.
The, the other. More. This is what we sent over to the board. You get modification and US order to, we have. If you decide here, we already determined that there's no questions.
I have a kind of a follow up. I thought of it before you thought of yours. Just wondering, with an original application that's nineteen years old and last amendment is fifteen years ago. Do we really need, can, can, do we have the option at this point of saying, deleting that last? That, um, that condition that requires the comeback for modification, because it seems like we're not going to major change here. It's, it's almost as if it's a, it's a, it's established house. I don't see why it would be reasonable to be created. And can we do that? Could we incorporate in our motion to remove that condition?
I, I think it would make, always make sense. The applicant to clarify if they desire that done as well, and then we would make sense to incorporate that.
Yes, so, Mr. Chair, so I think that what we could do is, um, this amended to the special permit, you could you could say that.
We can add verbiage.
Yeah, because basically the previous amendment said that everything that she doesn't buy from her, incorporate it. So you can say that again, but then you could also say, except for, I think, for a, like, I have to check for exactly what I said. For anything for, we wouldn't have to come back. To some decision in that.
Yes, great. Where we get.
Except to.
One of, one of the restriction covenants, any change in the open space requires that that be approved. So in, in this case, there is a change to the open space. And that is, maybe may want to carry.
So it's not in the restricted, it's not in the decisions, the restricted.
May I jump again?
Sure.
So the, um, the restricted covenant was wired by the decisions to make that in this restriction. So, um, I'm not sure the mechanics for amending the restricted covenant in this case, but I don't think it.
In this case. So, you know, like if they go back and modify that certain covenant.
So, so we could make that one change in the permit in the conditions that were carried forward. And then at some point, the applicant change the restrictive covenants.
Correct.
May I have a question? I, I have to go.
I've just examined, I'm assuming it talks about the, the lot footage being two hundred and fifteen feet. I assume that's for the entire lot. And that's the distance from Bronfield Street to the, to the end of that lot. We're talking.
We said, yeah, so, um, because if you can see the left hand side.
Right.
Along that.
Yeah, I assume it's all like, but the, and the axis is on, is that the adjacent part?
Well, but it's one lot. This is, this is very.
Yes, I know that, but they, where the, where the dotted line is, that's the end of the lot and the axis is up that section below that. Jake's a lot, but we're talking about that. That's, that's not really a street, city street or.
It's not a subject, it's not a subject. So below, below the dotted line. It's almost like it's a shared drive.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so the frontage is not really on that shared. Isn't the frontage on the, on the.
Very stipulated, but that, that's, it's basically the shared.
Again, there's something that's.
Yeah.
My other question was, was, um, what are we actually doing here? The, um, the original special permit was for thirteen Bronfield Street, the two thousand nine amendment was only referencing thirteen R. There's no one lot.
Yeah, I got to make like a, this definitely. Decision actually, both addresses. It should be, we got this, the book and the, in the decision issued here, uh, to make it clear, because they're really low implicated by this.
It's, it's one, it's one.
Yeah, it's one lots. These should all be referenced, and all the amenities are pretty different, not be, at least, you know, at least less than you.
So then the, um, the motion, if somebody wanted to make one, would be to grant the, uh, application for amendment to the special permit. Incorporating the conditions from the prior amendment, special permit. The condition which you can write up later regarding the, it can be to come back to us for additional changes and, um, and also referencing the, those lots, the entire box.
Yes. So.
Thank you.
A second.
Um, any further discussion? If not, then all in favor of the application? Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Sorry to break your streak, Gordon, that's.
Okay, the, um. Yes, very, it is so established. The third item on our agenda is general business, it's a request for minor modification of the property eighteen.
In the audience. How was somebody?
Ask where it is the.
Uh, Ray, are you with us? Are you the presenter this evening?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Okay.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I was. We, uh, we have the plan and the visual we provided, if you want to speak to that.
Okay, excellent. Sorry, I was muted, so someone just unmuted me. Thank you very much for that. Um, so yes, this is the, uh, this is our, our property. Uh, we're building a small pool, a, a soap pool that, uh, initiates of zoning determination was already given on four seventeen. Uh, we're also adding a sauna that's at the very bottom of this, um, property. Uh, and Jennifer, uh, recommended that I file a request for minor modification. So we've submitted all the information, had a few back and forth. Uh, the sauna, uh, we were able to confirm the sauna does comply with all the relevant zoning regulations and building codes. Uh, we're using a professional, oh, go ahead.
Uh, keep going. Keep going.
Okay, sorry. Uh, so we're using a professional contractor, J L Young. Uh, we checked with the HOA and got approval, uploaded that into this case. Um, we confirmed it has minimal impact on our neighbors. Uh, we, we checked with them all. There's only one that has a real view of it and, and he wrote a letter, uh, which we uploaded as well. Um, and it's an enclosed unit, uh, good, you have the picture of it. Um, you know, we're adding trees on the side of our property as well to keep the, the whole yard, um, uh, private. Uh, we know several people have those, there's no noise. So I'm happy to answer any questions about this sauna.
Uh, any questions for the applicant?
Just, oh, just one question. How, how tall is the, the sauna? And structure?
I have the dimensions here. It is, um, let me just get that. Height. Give me one second, I can. Find that.
We.
Okay, there. Yeah, the exterior front and the, the, the front is slightly higher, and that's ninety-two inches high. Just over seven feet.
Yeah, so it's a bit taller than, than the fence.
Sorry?
It's a bit taller than the fence on the front.
Uh. I believe our, our fence is, is over seven feet, I can confirm that, but it's um.
I think the fence was.
Yeah.
That was.
Sorry?
I think that was there, that wasn't there. Oh.
I'm really sorry that. Chapi, I, I apologize, I can't, couldn't hear the question.
Uh, just a confirmation that it's taller than the fence.
It's like, it sounds like you're thinking it's close, but it's very similar, it's just.
Yeah, it's right, it's right around the same, it's right around the same, our, our, our fence is very tall, yes.
Any other questions? Andy, I, I just wanted to ask you about the comment in the uh. Staff report. Um, consider this modification implicates additional visual mass and is still a concern in the planning board. Did you have a concern?
I'm, I certainly don't say that I have. Here, we're just that um, the, you know, you have some of those R D projects. The years. Holy Barn Lane is a much type of project, I think, the Evergreen project regardless of, you know, being. The development of the project. It has a lot more space, so. This uh, relationship here, or some other modification that we might see the same, but a particular concern. Uh, it was probably Barn Lane, uh, and basically some work professional thought like that. That's a little tighter for neighborhood, so perhaps more problematic.
So the, the um. In this case, the visual massing. Would be maybe in my factors.
Yeah, I. I think the fact that it's really close to the house itself, like on the property, like, like in this accessory building typically would be really great. It finishes it's.
Okay, so um, we have two options, uh, one is the motion to consider the request. Minor mod- minor modification minor. Motion to approve the minor modification request for eighteen void. Or to consider the major. I'll take either of those motions.
I would move to consider it minor. Requested.
Um, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, it was approved.
Okay, thank you very much.
George, we'll get you a certificate of vote for the records. For records.
It's smart, right?
Yeah. You're nothing.
Okay, so we are into um, we're in the discussion of MBT. Minutes. Um, so we have two sets of minutes to rule, um. April seventeen, um, and. I don't recall. Who is. Who is, I can tell you who's. So.
I was absent.
You were absent, okay. And Jen was absent. And. And then Beth and Heather who are not here now, so. And we could all vote except for. Does anybody have any amendments or changes to minutes? You sent mine in. So I have a motion. From those who are eligible to uh. Approve the minutes of April seventeen.
Vote to approve minutes with amendment.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all those. Any opposed? And then the second one is the uh. For the May first meeting. And. You didn't hear. You are not here, you were avoiding. Uh, so at the last meeting. Jen, Alden, and Heather were. So um. The rest of us can vote. Uh, was there any, again, I sense some. Ben and Steven to take any other. Comments on the. Um, we accept a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve this amended.
Give a second. Thank you. Um. Any uh, further discussion, not all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. This is approved. So now we move on to um. Other business. And that would be the. MBTA zoning. And where do we stand now?
Uh, so recap of that, um, I am providing to the council like this meeting. Two quick questions we had at City Council. We gave recommendations and feedback. Or. Through myself and you know, uh, we've tried to give feedback to the council, they have taken a look at the options. They have the zoning for unit capacity, uh, in particular the plywood recommendation that included the M pro option, uh, extension of. One like that. Then the what came out of the zoning advisory group, which was an alternate that we presented them, I can see. Uh, it's basically an extension along parker street, I'm sorry. Extension down parker street, a little further, not always. The, the inclination, I'm sorry, it's feeling toward the parker pizza, but the um, the city council wanted a portion, two things in particular, one was. Uh, based on the discussion we had, just refining, uh, because we're. We do lots. Which zoning, you know, and giving. The actual tax and see how things impact. So we had a global discussion. Deal with some things, so. Work through that B T C, uh, B H C, we uh, ran the model again based on feedback. Get a more accurate number, it's gonna give us credit for. The essence, we can extend a thirty unit breaker down. Further, so. It's forty acres an acre, it's all subset. Is. Probably. Say um, is a thirty acre breaker, and decided don't speaking to extend up. Thirty acres an acre, uh, up yet to forty acres an acre if necessary. Eastern, you know, side up against the district, taper down, you know, only if necessary to increase. So. Essentially tapering off the resident, you know, owning as an approach to the business part. So in essence, we're just refining that number, so we can clarify the uh, capacity to those that are lots, we uh. And also to verify. If you hear, because the second piece only is a two thirty. Uh, but because of recent staff or changes, uh, some changes. By the council, however, because the way these zoning ordinance works, I just wanted to make sure we were proceeding cautiously on that and doing it, uh, and not have any um, loopholes and things, we'd be probably down the road. Um, my concern was mainly that, because we have commercial components or other components that are non, not just the one that everybody just, you know, um, allow to the same statute. Uh, that we're bumping ours back up to the two thirds vote, so we're just confirming the council, we think we can basically either. Brave out the piece that we are not necessarily talking about here, which is a, you know, non-residential mode of being allowed, that's what I'm talking about. Or if you want to do that, we can also, um, this other piece, we can give us. Which I think might make sense, because I actually don't have a problem sort of activating the streets to get further. Street, but the idea is essentially to do the first one on the residence, so they can take a totally separate vote on whether or not to allow the, you know, the other. Meeting, essentially make this. So just to be clear, uh, but two things, wanted to verify the new capacity, probably landing on in the business. Parkers expansion. Um, thereby satisfying every day communities along with hindway, you know, absorbing hindway. Um, at the underlying forty yard district, yeah, that's the most where it is from. Uh, and then also verify the council is devoting a threshold, so that as they think opposed, they can obviously, we're. Got around two thirds, because opposed, it's a majority vote for generally. Components of it, because the statute allows us to reduce right of promoting on uh, expedited housing.
So I, I guess I would. Hope that we would. Take the safest route in the sense of. Making sure we come up with a vote with. Sorry. And, and then we have to break off. To get to a, to have the non-residential back. You can do that, but I just. Worried that. Given how a lot of places. Dealing with. If we give the council two thirds vote. We're not gonna give the. Give me, if you give. This application and we record. Uh, something as far as two thirds, we may.
Indeed, and and that's exactly why. Like. We did, it was essentially two votes, one is, right, is one is allowed that. Straightforward. Most complicated with it, and then, although I don't. Self allowing the continuation of the same, you know, if the other big series, you want to, you know, maybe allow as well. The truth is, I agree, maybe that's. So here, I think we've got to include that in the second. Not having one, which means we're not really allowing any activation, uh, but that would not, you know, necessarily be remaining the uh, the, you know, important vote.
I think there were some uses that. You know, it don't really make sense that we have. Which, you know, might be fine for transition, but it don't make sense for these four lots.
I would definitely not extend.
So if we can send again, simplify so. So if we're creating a sub-district speed. Is really.
Does, does this also incorporate some of Rick's really good ideas about increased setbacks and things?
Want to go to that. Which I don't.
One of the calculations include that?
Um, well, that's, that's important, you brought that up, because. It is one of the considerations, if we were changing the setting there, it can have an implication on unit capacity, um, in general, we've. Buffer in there, so while we had discussions on the spectrum. Look, you know, it depends who you talk to, when, you know, each part of the digital respect. Being there's been a set of the council that think like this that. Be above the threshold, but not significantly above the threshold. And so what we all, this is a recognition, we want to have a buffer there, we don't want to be stopped at five. And two, because of this. If we reduce or any restrictions. We need that to reduce the unit capacity to the last. So in order to make sure. I have no problem myself with recommending back to the council, you know. With the T C as we look at the numbers, enough of a buffer to deal with a situation like that. Um, um, so I think we can, we can make sure that happens properly if we account for, you know, in here, that in the numbers we're using. Um, but it goes to the discussion we're gonna have here, which is what is that setback? What should it be, and what are the things that we should keep in mind when we're seeing rich graphics and it's just a tragedy? Um, there might be different, the center line of the road is, right, they, you know, why they're. Maybe we can do it different ways in order to work correctly line where they are, so. There's different ways of getting from what it might be, and I guess the question is really from whatever design, but it's like which bricks will get into the presentation discussions. What is the experience a lot of people have there in terms of, you know. You know, aside and building, you know, facial appearance as well as like that sidewalks, you know, and so forth, and does that, you know, tape rubber? Change in any way from where the train station or orbit is, or is it, we don't continue on some point, so. Think about that experience that you're going from the train station to housing to business park, you know, so. What's that experience needed to be and how it should be all connected, certainly.
But before I get into that, I just wanted. Just talk a little bit more about the schedule, so. We need to get something, we're, we're aiming to get something by the end of June. To the state.
Yeah, so actually, uh. So. And it is me, I was, because I got back in from, you know, the numbers that he did. Harris North, our council room, and we're bit, and it's the dirt today. She hasn't got me or been back in, so. Mark. I just wish I, wish I would do, uh, to the council, and I can, you know, provide a due. Well, basically, in given essence, give a consolidated version of the period's appearance, we recommend the numbers, the blocks, and that, that density, uh, you know, the thirty units, forty, you know, an acre, uh, three, four stories. And then also, I just in the end of the question of, of how to do the voting, you know, so majority plus, plus, you know, if not that.
But the stuff that you need to get to the state would also need to. Um, you need to finalize to a certain extent the issues of setbacks. Because that's going to be how they, how they calculate the unit capacity.
That's correct, well, in essence, right now. Dialogue with the city house, the city house right now is operating. The exact same right period in this new area, so really the only area which is, which I can get. Where we're discussing in case standing, but actually the front setback, uh, but from a lot line, not from the, the perp, is definitely the current. That from lot line to the building beside, if we're gonna vary that up with the existing forty yard, which brings it close to the street, almost like urban areas. They get, they're a lot, but they, you know, bring it close, so we have a correlation between the building and the, you know, get the. So here, if we're gonna bring it back further, to make space like that, we just need to reconcile the fact that whatever. You count forward to the state, you know, then. We don't have to see, so. Because the council. Be your best members this week, early next week at the very latest, in order to do something going into June. They can vote, say, essentially a mandatory vote, say, we think this is the right path to submit. Just for you.
It has to be done. In order to, in order to actually do real, realistic. Division, we have.
Be looking at, here's your, we would say, here's our forty yard. It's basically just.
We were to, if we were to recommend. You send to. Uh, the state, something with twenty percent. In a subject, we, subject during that. Three month period. Uh, that would actually be.
As standing in our. Yeah, that would be much less like a concern.
We should, I think we should. Show a bit of this file across. First stage.
Yeah.
So when we're, because I assume that. During that three month period from the state is reviewing our submission, that will be the time when we actually get to dig in deep on design details.
That's true, we've got probably even mild. Say in our technical design standards, Jeff is speaking, and he has a spin, informal review verbally, you know, the state. Others back, yeah. Generally speaking, they don't plan on really changing any of our. Um, Jeff is speaking, well, I mean, communities, you make a face to you, look at those criteria and say, is that in the art? The architect fast. Through, you know. Unit capacity or ability of a developer to do something that's gonna make it possible or problematic. Other than they might access to modify the unit capacity and modeling to offset. Good to see why it becomes or let's do. He said new capital. Getting a spread. Lines. Like here, the existing forty yard district, they're essentially saying, we're not going back with those things again. We're really just talking about something new coming along, we have that benefit. Favor, so the point here, I guess, is that we can continue to do that dialogue after we've submitted our initial, you know, outline to the state, and that's one reason why I want to maintain this buffer. We can't continue that discussion, we just have to reconcile the fact at the end of the day, if the council's on a different wavelength and say, we want to stick with that minimum number. So I think what we want to do here is try to maintain enough buffer that not only deal with the potential state over the final, you know, extent, you know, on like. Uh, but also enough capacity to deal with this front issue with some variation, not, I don't think it needs to be a significant setback. Some variation offset, so at the end of the day, Rick's point, doesn't matter if we modify it because I got it in the pieces here now, it's over the, it's something. So like we go back to the state.
So I would agree with Rick. You make it conservative, that would be our worst case, that what you want to say, and then it can be debated, we don't have to go back to the drawing. Go back to some other calculation, I think that makes a lot of.
And if you think that, for example. Some of the design things we were talking about, like. Making a certain percentage of what would go to. I don't think it. So. You don't count. Might be some way.
I don't think it would, uh, it's why, I don't think that would be as much of an impact. I think, um, the one thing I interest in trying to, because privately, it depends. Tonight, you know, people get reasonable, whatnot, right, they get recognized, they never. While I can live in the project, it might be very connected right with. But I think you said. If we can give feedback. Really think it makes sense. Yeah, it's just. We want to make sure there's an offset here, we think there should be, you know, taken into account. We just know that, that there isn't a safe, if we're aware of that, the factors, we'll be explaining the numbers, we're going back. Issue here, and be fully aware that. Or that makes, makes complete sense, um, but it is fully understanding that piece of it. Now, I guess that's. Say, in summer, you know, with the street.
Yeah, because when would you say it later, and they would say, well, Christ, you had six months to figure it out, and you didn't say anything, and now you're saying something, so.
Why, and only, and it wouldn't make any difference except for the fact, somebody could do that, the capacity, like as opposed to possible, and. And that becomes a problem because that we would be able to, there's a usually exclusive recognition.
But the, the capacity like jumps by adding a person, and those are big persons, so like. You know, there's, there's, it's not like it's that tiny difference, it's gonna change a lot of persons.
Yeah, well, and this is one reason why we also like to be, just to bump up one of the last forty years today, right, it's one of those things where like, why does that seem a bad thing, right? If that's, you know. It's not a significant thing in my mind, it's more just making sure that we're in the same age, we're running to a snag.
But, but I think from our standpoint, we want to put our stake in the ground, say this is what we think is playing, and then other people have a different view, and they can argue that view. But if, but if we don't put the stake in the ground and present it that way to benefit, then it'll be another decision that'll. Teed around the edge of whether you get a confidence.
Yes.
It's just a question on process, is, um, is something required by the city council in order to submit it to the state, or are they?
No, the, uh, what actually. Recommendation. That's a great question, I had suggested actually the council, our last discussion on this, that they expected me, did I give them a communication, just like if I need to be some relaxed. And then we asked them to take a confirmatory vote, it's not really the by voting, vote result, vote, if I can pull them to a later on, they're changing the vote. Uh, but it's, the idea is, at least we're, we're trying to verify. Waiting to circle back, you know, at least. Were issued to be, you know, virtual or available for any reason, you know, whether that's. But we can arrive. It's last minute, and that's.
So, so when you presented to the city council, did you present the, the planning board?
And there's nobody. Sketch, right, and they were given the full background, and they discussed it, it just seemed they were leaning towards the.
That, and that didn't change out of the five one meeting on the planning board? Previous meeting from five one.
Right, there's discussion.
We've been trying to do what we can do, you know. As opposed to this middle wall, which we thought.
I thought the biggest change when we discussed the five one, the story add was part of this. I thought that was. Yeah, fork in the road. Missed out, I don't remember which.
I mean, yeah. Yeah, and then after that. And then Parker Street, and then the cap, or the, sorry, my crew said, let's send to the council the planning board recommendation, as well as one other option here, essentially, which was. One of the varied scenarios on Parker Street, you know, take those two scenarios, let the council decide, they are, and the council decided. Like a back rehash. Seem to be leaning toward that part, one on one verification. For, you know, essentially. Well, well, essentially, it all is.
I want to jump into this, first of all, I do, you know, anybody who has any ideas about any of these issues. Welcome your input, it is, I don't think I'm the only one, you know. Just can't stop doing this. So, um, luckily, this is tool, which is great for people who are, don't have, uh. Great catching skills, well, this is probably as good as I could do, but. Um, so I'm using this, this tool called Street Mix that lets you take different elements and play around. This first one is really, uh, what the area would look like, getting the fact of. But what the area would look like is a cross section if we had twenty foot setback, so it has a, um. The components of the right of add up to fifty thirty P, which is about what the right, the narrowest part of the right way is. Goes from about sixteen year grand road, um, over to fifty three near Boston Way. So that's, that's pretty much what we have, although the, the street isn't centered in the right of way, so it's, it's centered. Um, it doesn't quite work this way, so in this image, the, the south would be on the right, north would be on the left, so. Uh, both, um, moving to the center line, with two eleven foot drive lanes, two two foot. Or for areas, two six foot, uh, planting strips for trees, we talked about last. And at the south, there's a continuation of the ten foot multi-use path, on the north, there's a six foot. Uh, and then what we were talking about is going twenty feet back on the, uh. No, it's okay, it's just, it, it's a little blurry, uh. Twenty feet back from the back side. The multi use type, which is the one where it's the sidewalk, this one, so that kind gives you the kind relative. Three story building, gives you the relative sense of enclosure, doing the move to the next. Let's get to the whole sheet, it's easier, so let's start with. So there are, so we made a ten foot set. Um, it, it brings things, you know, obviously closer to the street, uh, it's more of a sense of enclosure, and then if we went to a five foot. We're, we're getting kind of more toward the. Nothing else, and the only thing that's changed between these three images is how far the buildings are. Back of sidewalk and, uh, multi use path. And then I went from here and I, you know, looked for. Somebody's thing, right, but, so the next one, um, which is in Brooklyn Heights. Somebody did this great sketch, and it actually is. This page part of the street is a little bit narrower, eighteen feet instead of. Twenty six feet, it's significantly narrower, and the planting strip is only four feet, I'm sorry, there's a bike lane too. And then the, the planting strips are only four feet, it's supposed to six feet, um, but the, and this is a three and a half story building. Raised up the street instead of a three story building at the street level, um, but this is the kind of enclosure you would get. With the ten foot setback, in the sense, somewhere between the five. Not strictly comparable. It's building, but it's, it's some, somewhat. Then we go to the next one, and, um, this is Magley Conception. Uh, three story building with a ten foot setback in the back of sidewalk. Um, so it's somewhat comparable to what we would be looking at if we did a ten foot setback. Um, not for a street. And then the next one, uh, this is that building in Framingham, the issue last time, twenty five foot setback. The street is new sidewalk here, so, um, when we, this is more comparable to. The ten foot setback. Um, so, so that's kind of, go ahead, there's nothing to get this street, so you don't get a sense of the enclosure. Uh, that's, you know, that would be, I mean, keep you on, and then this is the Brown School. Uh, and it varies, because it's actually parallel to the street, but at the point where the arrows, the lower arrows is. About twenty two feet setback. This is comparable against a three story building, so it's kind of comparable to what we would be doing on. By Parker Street if we had a twenty foot setback. I think there may be one more, uh, I'll mention one, so this one, uh, is on Low Street, um, thirty feet setback from the street. The sidewalk is at the back of the, of the setback. It's gonna be comparable, but this is kind of, uh, similar to what the north side of the street would be if we had twenty. The back of sidewalk. And then the last, uh, and then this is, um. So this is on Am Street, um. And so if the door in this is. Uh, but the sidewalk doesn't. It's not a good, it's a, is there one? Yeah, um, wouldn't let, um, fifty feet setback, setback, this is a bigger setback. Anything we've been talking about. Just for the, you know, the one, all the time, so, um, I don't know, you know. How you feel, whether this is prior to any thoughts, um, what makes sense for Parker Street? Uh, it's, it's somewhat arbitrary. I don't know, any, any thoughts on all this, that makes sense, Jamie?
I mean, I think, I have an opinion, but before I say my opinion is, I think like the criteria that should drive is probably. A lot to do with the traffic and the nature of the traffic on that street, like. You thought it was gonna be kind of street where people slowed down and were looking at the stores. And if you think it's a, a street where people always, let me just align to their commute, then it should be wider. I, I, now my opinion is, it's probably somewhere near. Because they, the, the Brooklyn exam seems too tight to me, but. Always working is also too wide, it'd be good to kind of tighten it up, intentionally still a bit down a bit, because you're entering a denser zone, that's a. So, so somewhere in, like, there's a.
I guess the question is, if it were ten feet.
Yes, it's too tight, it feels too tight to me.
So then, then the question is, are they gonna be, are they gonna be stored, or they're not gonna be commercialized, is ten feet?
Realistically, I don't think that's a great retail spot, especially if we're making people put parking in the back, so I don't worry.
I think that ten feet makes it feel much more like a. Like, naturally, like, like. Question again, over.
Okay, go ahead.
Just for the main.
I was just gonna ask, was it, made, any of the folks here seem like they represented something you thought was the future?
Sort of a different model against sidewalks.
And that's what.
So the block line, we get, typically, we have.
They, well, hopefully, they, hopefully, we'll be able to align it so that the sidewalk, sidewalks are safe within the. Right, so it could be the same as the.
So is our zoning flexible enough to deal with the fact that that street is not centered on the right way?
So, um, well, one thing I would suggest is that. I mean, this is a very specific. The zone for hypothetical situations for zoning. So, potentially, we could say that the, um. That the developer has to create. Six foot planting strip and a either five or ten foot walk, and then a setback. Yeah, we can do that. I mean, it's really gonna be, it's, it's going to be probably. First lot is gonna be. I don't think we can tell a developer.
I'm just wondering, where is this? Where we're gonna be having this. Do we apply that official setback? Whether I'll be doing, you know, fully on both sides, or accept the big principles, because you wouldn't have to bite that, otherwise the other to me have. Whereas we don't.
Well, I think that that was the, the intent of the process through the first one. Um, so it's, it is a five foot sidewalk, ten foot, multi use path.
Yeah.
And exactly, so that essentially that, in essence, the buildings on the south side would be, would end up in fighting perfect on the edge of the road. Because of, because of the multi use. Are you, are you thinking that maybe the one side could be, one, either the west side or the south?
I was just, to me, it seems that that's possible. I just tend to feel like, say this part, because I see what it's. Because I tend to think that. To me, it just seems that maybe benefiting, even more of a connection between the pedestrians and what happened. Where we can, you know, yeah. Like, no, this is even a way near the. So for me, I would like to see the city more of a walkable. City, you know, and that sort of thing, as opposed to things. Are, so I don't want to see. And then I want to see lush, you know, land. This to me doesn't feel like it's very inviting or, you know. So, I mean, I'd rather, I mean, that feels like a little bit more, yeah, not, I'm sorry. Through this, you know, we'll put it up there, so.
I thought it over complicated, do, do you want to create the opportunity for, if it were commercial use? Do you want to create the opportunity for those to move, if it were, to some degree into that point? So they be, they begin to separate and have.
Well, it doesn't exist, I think, I think. It doesn't make sense necessarily, people residentially. We, we might have, we might say that there's where the true retail, not just the marks, true retail round court. Would be ten feet.
Create art state.
Yeah.
Follow the store.
That, that may be, so, because, because the, I think it, for president, it's gonna be nicer to be in the Brooklyn.
This is the coolest tool. This is so cool.
Have you ever used that?
No.
It's fun. I, I actually started getting frustrated because there's, there's more, more, uh, tools available, we start paying.
So, yeah, it does seem, if they just like, said the nature, nature of the street, it is more of a commuter. Now, but if it thinks that's about it, transition. It'll slower.
Just saying like that area, me is not one that's. Me is actually gonna be a place with more activity happening between these things, and people wanting to go out. Would you rather separate things, you know, it might be better. Too close together, but. It's unfortunate to me, I don't know that. Buy something, but one, it's unfortunate to me that, you know, one half of it weighs what it is, it's fun to get the. It's still a little, a little, yes, it'd be right across. Me having a little bit more of a, you know, um. And all, you can sort of understand a neighbor pretty well on the right side. So, one is beneficial to someone. Just around. So, I, I'm actually. A little bit more on that. Because we're creating more of that welcoming or inviting place as opposed to, you know.
Because, I guess my, my concern. I understand your. My view. I, I agree that if we have a true mixed use. Street with lots of destinations on it, people go live it. Then. Bring closure to the street, but if, if you just don't think of coming in and. Then. That don't want.
Yeah.
Yeah. I also just think. Just thinking from a design standpoint, like if the buildings at the train station were tighter. Like you're building up to something that really was like a village node. It would make sense to be tight, but nothing over there is that tight. So I think it'd be weird for this to be a spot where things like so tight over here. It would feel like, why did they put this pinch point here where you get to the train station and everything's all spread out? It would just feel weird from a design standpoint. Not, it's not a planning thing. It's just. Sequence of spaces feels.
It would be nice if we had been able to create a commercial center of all transactions.
Yeah, and but that's.
It goes nice rendering. Can't put within those sketches on this, in this area, plus you're doing like. Like, the rendering was done a long time ago of this area. Area. They had buildings like right in the middle of the wetland. In fact, they had a box way, it was a box way to be like surrounded by buildings and so forth. That's pretty feasible here. Um, so, and maybe you want it, maybe we want the area to be sort of like a little more.
And then just the reality of it's between some major. Where it's, I mean, a lot, it gets a lot of traffic. I mean, that's kind of my thought too, like. So as a pedestrian, do I really wanna be close to lots and lots of fast moving traffic?
Yeah.
You know, so like, it's a weird balance. Like, yes, making it tighter would make it feel more pedestrian friendly, but not if there's a ton of traffic, you'd rather have more space. To feel safe.
But how do you slow down? How do you get rid of the car? You want to slow things down and make things more narrow?
Yeah.
Place.
I just think there's a balance in the middle.
Yeah.
If you didn't, yeah, we, if I didn't have a connection at the end to room one. Absolutely, I'm using. But this is. Where you got people that go to.
With virtual slip rent type.
Yeah.
Ease, you know, it's, it's.
Yeah, the street that comes up and the full street that comes down. We want to slide into.
It's literally curved to make you think you can keep on. So there's no stuff.
There's gonna be a change in it. Isn't there as part of the, we're putting some kind of, as part of our. Make up project. Putting like some kind of rumble strips in that full speed turn. We did something to tighten that.
Yeah, around the. Yes.
It's a big, right, because I do use that a lot on my bike and it's, people are coming hot around it. So that's fantastic.
It's a wide turn. You get it really fast and quiet, right?
Yeah, you have to, you have to trust that when you're coming out of the, the. Street that crosswalk. Right, you know, the fashion lights, people just. There's not a lot of. That's one. Okay, uh, well, I think this is a good discussion. We have a range of. We have to kind of narrow down, but. Encourage everybody, is this, uh, you have a post?
Uh, I asked in the post. Like, oh, is it a bit of a nice thing? Then it opened the answer already there.
So I'm just thinking, just so everybody has a chance to reflect on it, we got.
Yeah, you can just. These on the post there. Certain problems, so R and B data is gotten, uh, you know, where we go to something, so we might supplement our reason. You know, but the, the logical to be, what.
Do we, do we have a page on that website for the MBTA?
We do, actually, these. It's like. So, yeah.
This, 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 I think, I think the, uh. The kind of streetscape with all shaped buildings and buildings behind it. I think it'd just be good for people to be able to see.
Oh, then. Well, they do get.
Be able to see.
Yeah.
And I think that, you know, again. Anybody who has good ideas. I don't know who this for, because. I can play with those pieces. If I'm really in love with places. Not so much, not so much. Coming up. News. Any other thoughts or? Not. Anything else?
Um. Let's say, uh, you've probably heard. Or. You like our developers and doing something. You gotta take well. They knew a lot, you know, a lot of things when you go there. Say you have, say a piece of that area could be broken off. Wait. Let's see where the discussion.
Do you know what that one?
Do you do any concept? Oh, um, there's discussion. Facing in a site, uh, you know. It's towards obvious. Plus, you know, written details. Part of the. I think what. Okay. Made it to commercial spaces in some way or maintain an existing body versus just doing all residential. Well, that's the entire. Soon as they're breaking off. Bar. And then I look, good, they seem like. However. The, uh, the unit density of. These all, these are. They have the base of here, which is, we look at our. Forty, forty to the acre. The sound is only changing as the, the calendar. You can point to something. Even if. She does a lot of, it's, you know, there, you're gonna be somebody who's an acre, I think, so. The sound like that. All like that. Here, so you know, what, what. So here's the simple hardware division. It is a bad thing to expect something. So we actually, that's what it is. What's like, it's like a. On your vision, you know. Oh, we have to figure this.
And we don't have, we don't have a vision.
We haven't.
So you have plenty more, you know, for us. We want over there. Do let me get, no. So, um, as we get into that, we'll, we'll help, but, um, but we have to go to the later. Well, we're going a little faster and of course. See something happen to this, being, you know, part of. You may see something.
What?
Did you see all the comments in the text?
The eighty, eighty-five comments and people. Came out of the, the mayor saying he was discussing the. Uh.
Well. And if you have any particular thoughts.
Wasn't there a study done? Did you have like a? You know.
We, we're going. Yes, we, we started that process, put it on pause to get the. Yeah, we wanted to focus on that. The Harvard Kennedy School vote did finish up their stuff, although they didn't give me any, because they heard their final report yet. They did do a presentation to us. Uh, which I wanted to be able to pass on, you know, to you folks. They're like, here's what they gave us. Uh, they did do actually some nice rendering things to sort of show that. Second, they didn't really, uh. Re-serve them. But it wasn't like all, you know, all like. We did get to learn results here. It's, uh, it's a first review of what are the effects that community might have, you know, the financial benefits, certain impacts. But it's a start. Start showing some renderings to get an idea of what asks might look like, what everybody's spirit might be. They jump some police reads components into the story avenue, that could be an idea of what it could look like. Despite, you know, this. Circle back.
Wouldn't it be great to get some of those images, like out so people could respond to something that's totally hypothetical without developers' interest in mind? Just to start getting feedback to see if there's any consensus at all out there. I mean, isn't that, couldn't that be a deliberate strategy?
Well, that is, actually, that's our intent, yeah. I, I did, I have a mode of saying, just the Harvard Kennedy School, you know, there, but. Definitely the consultant pieces, that's one of the major tools you want to, and you know, actually, it might be, but I'm. Um, you know, I, you started to debate, like, when you get out of the consultant to me, I've actually been persuaded over time that, like, the visioning part of that is actually more beneficial than having to write the source language, because, you know, it's very time rated language, but. We have to have the same vision at the beginning of the day, and that's the hard part, because people don't, are always pulling the pause and say, let's have that decided, but we'll roll picture first. Then write the plan quickly. Sometimes these, I'm talking about. A little more per bay and, you know, that, without having to think about, you know, what we want to see there first, breaks the short. Years, we didn't have. All the things.
We could, if we could have the, your consultants, um. Under the project, planning project, you have the street avenue. If you, you could have it, um, set so that. Begin into September and really have some meetings in September, some visionary meetings. To be part of and, you know, the, the consultant presents some of these. Within the meeting facilitated discussion, uh. By the public. I think that would really help us, yeah. Again, to a point, to use the fall. You know, when we're not in bunches and, and, oh, yeah, we own distractions. And, and then.
Yeah, that, that will help, I guess. Even the developer, if I'm, if people themselves, that it's a, that they have, that, that, that's their concern. They just don't know.
Well, I was just thinking the development.
Yeah, my question, sorry, right, but it was. Given the length of time of the building, if they're not. Not taking. What is the rationale? She had shared about why it wants to.
Oh, I mean, it's ironic to me in some way. Years ago, I thought, it wasn't planned a number of years back. We had this guy, I, I was, I mean, the attorney, and I said, there, we're the staff. You know, we were discussing residential and the response I got was, we want to change it, zoning over there, like, it's like twice zoning, you know. You know, and city zoning, but, you know, not really interested in residential, uh, it was an inquiry at one point, we'd like to do residential down here. And I said, well, what about comprehensively, you know, it's really, you have to be a good mixed use district, like, what's the, but. No, no, we only want to touch this one area we're interested in and have a base because of the whole portfolio. So, um, you know, I, I'm not interested in what the private developer or what's hard to watch, I just want to go to the city overall. Um, all I'm saying is, is a. Myself. Initiative, those long term goal, I don't have. Recognizing. One facet of the important, which is we don't know how long it'll take to get the zoning amendment process for a wholesale change. And that's the thing that's being discussed here. I give credit to that consideration or concern. However, at the end of the day, I actually care more about the end result or whatever it is. Take longer to get to a change, but that's what it takes.
And I think that, I think that the, uh, there's gonna take a lot longer to get a zoning change to allow seventy units per year. Would to take. The zoning isn't based on vision. Or they're. This, they're gonna be some legitimate producers. We've talked about spots only in the past. We have one small parts. Seventy minutes acre, everything around it doesn't allow. You know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a tough.
And then you're always chasing it. Once you allow a piece of it, then you're trying to wrap around what would make sense and then it may not come. To be, like, your idea is get it out, like, here's what we're thinking. And a lot of people have firm opinions on what should happen, about anything. So it starts that eighty-five debate and then people think, well, what happened to that one? It was never proposed.
And if you could, if you could get the consultant team, you know, I don't know where you are in, in your negotiations and. But if you could get them to do the work that Jamie's talking about. And get them. So that the conversation starts and then we get a public discussion in the fall. I think. You know, they just aren't gonna. You'd be asked to do it long, long groups.
Long, long.
I don't, I don't think that planning work. Can, can, can be doing, doing that kind of thing because we bring things up to the public and we can get shot down too.
And it really is gonna come down to some imagery, like, you know, they, like, words are words, but some pictures of things, people are. It's kind, what's gonna win today.
Yeah. Oh, like.
But you have, you have a consult?
Yeah, like, my, what I, we don't control the timeframe of the mayor.
Well, I know, if, if they want to do that stuff, they can do it. If they, it could be, you know, disaster.
Or what about the Kennedy School images? Those have existed for a while.
Please.
Okay. I mean, can we see them?
I, I didn't get their.
Are you suggesting this chicken or egg thing when it comes to what to do with a major parcel from a planning perspective? I think that. That's appropriate to have those discussions. Our consultant come up with some ideas. It shouldn't be restricted by another group.
No, what I'm pointing out here is if, if you see a different track being taken, one that's on a faster track and you're not happy with that, you may need to direct that concern to whether it be. The mayor's council, others. So you have to see if they have a different vision of how fast something should go, if they're willing to wait for this or that, if there. There may be concerns that this body may very quickly be able to wrap up zoning and say, we've got a couple of months, we've got something we think has worked up there. The county forum could take a long time. So the point there, I guess, is that. People could pull it out of the neck of the cap or a bit. Sponsor zoning change for this or that.
But you control this project, the timeline of this project, so for the story avenue visioning. So that's, that's what, that's what I'm saying is we should be moving that forward so that. The developer doesn't come in and say, the city's not doing anything. Let me do my thing first. No, that's, he, he can do that anyway. But it's, it's a.
Yeah, if you're back with your heels up, you don't have another class. Your thing. I have been struggling to try to get work on that last month and I invented to do it because they let the northern amount of processing go to get everybody down here. So, sorry, to be there. I'm gonna get that work.
I'm not criticizing you, just saying.
It's, I, I, I mean, I'm realizing you're thinking this.
I think the situation has changed now. The developer has abruptly desired to activate something else. Now we're all agreeing with you.
It's really, it's really like, you know, we, we, we know we have this money available to do this work. And we're looking down barrel of the developers to us saying, you're not doing the work. So I think we, it's just, it's just, just, uh. The same frustration you. We just want to make sure that. We're proceeding forward and. We're not. We're not, uh. Being criticized. You're not doing your job.
But, but we're not fast trapping the. I'm not saying that it has to be done. Yesterday. The, the. I don't know. I'm saying this, we're trying to round it, trying to be honest, yeah. In other words, if we. We have a pathway to create a concept. That would be a, a, appropriate within the. The, the normal course, you know.
Yeah, I mean, frankly, for, for me, a project like this and to explain it, the most beneficial thing would actually not go around in circles or around a lot of other things we often do around. Of course, we do.
But Ada, you were at one point pitching this for the MBTA project, which we have, you're back on that, like, we, we supported that. We knew it was, I, I always felt it was a long shot. But I thought just the fact that you were putting it out there was great. And so you might have gotten a little bit of momentum and people might be a little bit more interested in top, independent of the fact that. Another fact on.
Yeah, well, to be clear, I was not suggesting that we had to take into account, say, camera or story avenue or MBTA. I was just talking in the fact that we only had a couple of areas and say it would be appropriate. And my concern was that we fully take into account both that area and the train station because it wasn't apparent just yet. Whether or not the council was comfortable going further into this park or ever one to Emperor Oregon. So we had to look at all that on the table and obviously this state president because of state mandate. So we gotta sort that.
It was a great, it was a great idea. I first, I, for one person, thought it was a fantastic idea, even if it was a long shot, because it got it out there in the dialogue and I felt fantastic.
So said another way, how, how can we help you with that? In other words, it's not like you're here to just take assignments of a list of things to do, right?
I mean, I think if the more, I guess for a time range, it's not so much of a project itself, it's the, the large product of the zoning piece. I'd actually say if with further discussions were happening about this one site or development scheme, you know, a nice city piece of what might be. I'd say engage in discussions with, you know, with the county mayor, others, just to be on the same page about wherever, whatever timeframe it may be or policy. Um, or outcomes or is looking for. So for instance, um, you know, I'm aware. We're talking about that, the MBTA areas, but we're not in this. So. I have to be back to the fact that, you know, we don't. I'd love, it's frustrating for me as a, you know, miss, well, that's what it's supposed to, that you, you know. You don't. Overall, it was only, I cannot say that because we happen to move all. Say statute that works to basically give someone the ability to propose a. May not be appropriate. They give an area. We have here. We can see at this particular. We have here, we can see at this particular site, except this size and nature. Because of the reality that we're faced with, and not agree here where. But the editor can say, no, I'd love to be able to say that, unfortunately, I'm undermining our regulation, right? My piece of loophole or put in there, like, a lot of that is be the fact that it's going to come along as our project. It's a little bit of like, you know, so, you know.
I, I, yeah, I, I just wondered whether that project would be any worse than before to be. You know, we would not, because we don't have, we have to create, we're, they'll be asking us to draft something to do what they want to do.
So obviously, that's the reason to be precise, this is not the thing to do, and here, I mean, and here's the big why, it's, it's. Well, no, when they, when they had virtually come to what. Want to work out, you know, that works, you know, the density of which is the bigger. Just, you know, being aside, even my, you know, they're just, you know, understand why you might want to shrink the portfolio. To do that, that's easy, and keep it much of it in the commercial portfolio, which in this case means the sea of parking. But if they, you know, is that something that makes up from a design perspective or scale? But is it also something that's impalable moving perspective? Now, well, somebody in the parker density, I think I can't, I don't have any, this makes sense. If someone could present a better argument as to how I present this, I'm always open to discuss, but I'm not. So, use an air and say that's perfect, say that, so, somebody else has to be able to make that case and, you know, if you're chipping around with someone here, it's sort of the same. That person right now, because I don't see, I, I, I like the cost, like, and I like to keep the mixed use component within there. Other than that, I think little things can be beside, to get the area. Stand out the way that I'm not like present that to the opponent, that is going to be palatable or make sense.
I, I think one of the things that, you know, you started on a vision to, about a bigger area. And it's ironic, that vision could upstone a lot of the, well beyond seventy units per year on one little process stand. So like, the whole, like, there is a vision there that's really bold and great, and I, I was.
What the entrance wave to the other side of the river.
That's what Irving asked you when I get that, and you're dealing with a negotiation strategy now with a particular developer center being pitched by.
What, one other thing that might be worth doing, just so you understand like a little life perception, I don't really know what is here. Uh, I've been persuaded to someone to describe, we have to take with a free cash flow, talk about, you know, what's possible on the roof, but sorry, the story avenue section versus say the rest of it. Where we have the sea of parking with a, you know, parker basket, or closet, all that, you see a park, right? Not really welcoming, not really inviting, you know, some, what a potential rest of it is some way, so. The state, uh, parking lot, there's potential there, but that's not the stage, we don't control it directly, that would take a while for the state to do anything with it anyway. If it does, it's going to be larger than there, probably right, so that could be housing, it's probably, you know, overparking in front, but that's not what our direct control, that can be some. Uh, then there's the story avenue section, which is small lots, right, relatively small, they get a lot of uses on them, they're one, they're right there. Somebody immediately tear it out, something to put up, build a way. So, we're probably not going to see near term a lot of changes happening, but you've got wooden way, and you've got. They're not going to go anywhere anytime soon, we're probably going to buy at the post on, it's there, they have to build the same volume, right, so. So at the end of the day, we're really talking about the benefit, you know, this area, and I definitely think we're going to do it holistically, but most of the benefit really is going to come from. Putting aside the state piece and then the, 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 is the Kmart, more, well, the coolest, you know, area. That, where you change all that parking and, you know, the building there is just something that's, yeah. So that's why I have, I think, the majority of realistic changes will happen, you know, in this area, that's the push for the world. Where we're going to get the most change, you know, these areas.
I think, you know, there's a, there's some sense to that, but I think there's also the, we can actually, we can decide if we, if we have a vision. We can design a zone, and, and one example, uh, I was working in. Nada, can we do the golden triangle project? Um, and we changed the zoning to give incentives for lots to be consolidated to produce. And almost as soon as we got. In pretty, yeah, the, uh, water wings came in, we actually also had some setbacks, fire against for density advancement. And when Warrens came in, buying two, I think, two lots, the drive rate, a little close to the street, with much more pedestrian. And so if you provide the, what we're, you provide the economic incentive for a developer to do something. More, more intensive, you can, you can get it on like that. And I could see that, I could see, you know, our brand new, whatever it is, the Mexican restaurant that we just got. I can see that disappearing, it'd be combined with something else, you know, combined there. And, and, uh, becoming a restored goal, we designed, we decided that's. We designed the zoning to encourage it, to provide much more density, provide to do certain things. But I think we just, I think we need to get the visioning stage first, it's, it's not a matter of, just trying to figure out the vision.
There was a start of that with the institution for savings.
Boy, that was, and then we got, we didn't know.
I think the challenge on that side generally is you've got, you've got a couple of uses in market. Shaw's that sure further land lease agreement, there's a certain block of parking in it, that is, it's, so that's, that's sort of a given. So you have that machine kind of running in the background, then you got to find the edges to play with. Kind of an interesting challenge.
So anyway, I think, you know, it'd be great to. Yeah, you know, understanding the, the limitations and how much, how much stuff is going on. Have you, do you have a contract yet with them or? Anything else?
Um, you may have a little overview of the global situation, yeah, because of. You have a discussion with the butters. What, the, something complaining about review or ZBA review or both?
Is there some danger to that? I'm just wondering if, if we don't have any authority, we'd say, and we make some strong recommendations of them. Um, is that, you know, does that endanger to the project? Or if there's a plan, some people say planning words crazy and some people say, no, we should.
Yeah, but I guess it depends on what you have. Yeah, I mean, in my view, it's, it's, we've already looked at this. It doesn't seem significant enough to result in a situation like that, we've got, you know. It's one of the parameters of the dollar. They, sure, there could be something that's not, I don't think it, see a vision, which, I, or, person.
Who would be looking at, be honest, as before you see.
It's not obvious to me, quite frankly, because to me, I mean, if you're all recording. It's enough descriptive by you to kind of put it in a low sort of. Specifically what you would look at, because you've already got a basic driveway layout, you've already, you know, agreed that as part of the ZBA review. So they've already agreed they're going to pay that. Look at the water design, the rating, the water design, you know, so, so it's not apparent to me that there's anything obvious applied there. Point is more about what the final rating and landscaping, what's the architectural elevation of these buildings, you know, those are the things to look at. But the second, to me, is one of the things reasonable to say for all, it does make general sense to pull the driveways away from the intersection. Out of the one, which is a hit away from the intersection, there's another one off High Street, um, you know, the mass is kind of broken down, where it's reasonable, so.
The, the way I've seen it, when I was in Nada, what we would do is we would, we would comment on what the ZBA. Was reviewing, but it would just be comments, things that they go of lighting and things that they may not, the nature of the zoning board appeals. They, they would not get into as, as heavily as a site plan review, planning board would do, and they could take them and use them for whatever purpose they used them. They could say, okay, but there was never a dispute jurisdictional that someone else.
You could also let it more reserved, like, you know, in a way, and just say, you know, where we were, you were another board.
It's a curse.
But we have to think these are things worth looking at, not saying, we recognize this, you're saying, we think these are things worth looking at, you know, in fairness to you with another board. We want to make sure to look at these design considerations, and they would have to decide based on that.
I guess, I guess I would like to make sure, I would like to be. It's clear what it is that we are being expected to, to look at, you know, if, if, it's a. I don't, I don't want to be, for example, used by the developer to bless a project before it goes to the zone. The question, if the developer has particular questions that they want us to, I. You know, is, I'd like to do a twenty-six foot driveway, your regulations say twenty-four, is, is something like that. Um, that they, they would like to have our experience to review, like to do that. I do not want to have them come to us and say, this is an informal, look at everything.
I think it's, well, I think it's, because I, well, I could, I can, you know. These are the flag this development came, what I've seen thus far, and I have the elevation of the building, the final landing level. However, that being said, I completely agree with Rick's sentiment, I know, I've seen this on land before. Um, I, I certainly would want to want the board to view, given it formally to be misconstrued or misrepresented later.
We would do it with the app, what would happen would be a plan.
No, no, they're asking you come to you. And I think the question there, to reiterate, you know, what is the question?
They go to someone else and say, well, what they told me.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's a question, are they.
But you could still do a plan.
We could do a planner view, but if it, if it doesn't have any, if, if they have to, if the zoning board also has to do plan. Then, you know.
It's courtesy, the way we would do it, it's courtesy comments for the zoning board appeals, for those things that, that we did naturally. Full site thing was the native, we did the whole thing, we had every consultant in the planet, they wouldn't, it wouldn't be the better factor of some of those things. So we would share, and it would be, it would be something like, no, no given that anyone else submitted comments, and they were like, they weren't, they weren't, you know.
But would you presume that, like Rick said, that it's, if it goes implicit or maybe explicitly stated in there, that it's not a blessing in the.
It's a letter to the zoning board appeals, it's not to the app, we're not, we're not ruling.
So, but, so it would be more. I guess my, my recommendation is not, we'll see what it comes, but not have a letter saying we recommend approval. That whether it's saying here are the issues, if any, that we see.
It would say, the planning board and staff review the following drawings and, and, and offer the following, you know, comments. And it goes in and the zoning board reads it in and says, no different, writes a letter and asks the end of it. They may ask, like, what do you, what do you mean about that through, you know, uh, zoning board or not, they might just go, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think it's good to add the feedback, flags when you're concerned about, ready to fit it all, then you can turn it up. But at the same time, you don't need to necessarily be blessing anything on the half of an applicant for another board, because there's no reason why, say, another staff person or another board. Be put in a position of making the case for an applicant for another board, right, that's not.
Yeah, what's a little unusual in this particular case is that Valory somewhat endorsed the concept in some detail.
Right.
So why do it again?
And that's why, it would really only have to be about getting into the, the degree of the plan. We, that was, you know, we were up there, looking down and saying, looks good in general. We, when we made our recommendations before, we didn't look at any measurements of, period, radiating. Guess the question is.
It's not mandated anyone.
I mean, I would refer to the.
You don't even have to take it.
Um, are we going to be having a public hearing, a community meeting?
Yeah, sorry, um, the, uh, word of the anyways, community center is. The community center views, which is what the senior center, community services would be, uh, back at the table. We have a sponsor for, the advertised, we're going to have a joint public hearing on our agenda. And, um, we have the playing board. Um, and I don't know, I, I bet that will be. Be with a lot of the data, so. Well, I'll be, I'll, it's basically to allow community center, but if, for, 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 so in this case, Holland, um, within the business park district. Um, noting here, and I would say, we, we did have some discussion for this amendment before, but. Makes sense, rather than here, we're allowing this amendment to allow a community center user, your services as well. To happen along that low street, front of their cross, school, in this case, along Holland, would that be a generally acceptable location? In my view, it is, because they're close to the school, you're already accepted, the fact that kids are going down there and saying, you know, new services doesn't make sense, it seems kind of counterintuitive to me. So as long as a safe process, they're all a little bit close to you, but it'd be integral of the project, the site that you, um, get the whole city through. To me, it's a, seems like a logical location for it, it's not one of the current, it's something, maybe not one of the current, for the users coming up onto the school side. Of, you know, the low street or on Hill Street at this, at this point, based on the way neighbors are, so, I understand historically the map is drawn to show. This is my, but you land use pattern, it doesn't make sense for me to dump out more industrial traffic and uses onto those areas. So, we actually had contemplated possibly changing that for the business park residential, um, essentially just maybe what the adjacent residential. Both sides of the street being residential there, um, hope that is put aside because it brings up another issue, which is the underlying difference in changing. And there seem to be, uh, some, some interest, some part of the council to, um, focus specifically on this unique question of, of the community services and the use down there. So, we're, whether or not community services, the, you know, facility of any type. Is allowed along that bunch of the low street where it's in, it's the school in this case, it's allowed in that area, but nowhere else, it's much larger. So this is that, so that's a good.
And that is, um, it's essentially the same amendment that was shut down a couple of years ago.
Uh, yes, but the exception is we already dealt with a piece of that with the whole, uh.
With, I mean, the, the communities.
It's the community center portion that was in there before.
I want a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?